Well, he's gonna run a trip there.
I don't know.
Is he supposed to run?
Okay, Gary, we're ready to go whenever you are.
Um, you don't want me to run the meeting, do you?
I could rather.
Ray can run it.
I'll call the order to Scott County Board of Adjustment. First thing on order is roll call. Donna Hensches?
Here.
Gary Hartman?
Here.
Ray Huber here, Ed Harvey?
Sure.
Barbara Johnson?
Thomas Vonoff?
Here.
Lee Watson?
Here.
Next thing on the agenda is approval of April tenth, two thousand and one minutes. Everybody's probably seen the minutes. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion to second approve the minutes of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. All in favor, indicate by aye.
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 Next thing on the agenda is, um, public hearing. For child variance number PL two zero two one dash oh two four, request for variance to reduce the required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet for a single-family home, section thirty-two, Helena Township. Current zone is UERC. Greg, are you gonna present?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, on the screen... Um, on the screen is the site location map. The properties, uh, properties are located in a development called Raven Stream. Just to the east is Neeler Avenue, that's the border for the city of New Prague. So this is just, just outside the city of New Prague, um, in section thirty-two of Helena Township. The plat for Raven Stream was created back in the nineteen-sixties, so these lots predate, uh, county zoning regulations. Jacob and Gina Skozaczek have applied for a variance to, uh, build on this lot. As I go to the next screen with the aerial photo, uh, you can see the lot outlined here in red is a vacant parcel, uh, whereas most of the other properties, uh, in this development have been, uh, built on. The request is to, uh, allow a front yard setback variance to build a home, uh, at seventeen feet from the local road right-of-way. Uh, the required setback is thirty feet from the road right-of-way, so what we're talking about is the cul-de-sac of Pearl Street here. The applicants bought the, uh, property within the last year, and this was originally, uh, platted as two lots. So originally, it was lot seven and lot eight. Raven Stream, the, the DNR-protected stream flows across the north or just off the property to the north. So the DNR-protected stream carries a, a setback that was really not in place when the lots were created, uh, from a stream of one-hundred-foot setback. So the applicants, when they purchased the property, contacted the county and asked about, uh, building on lot seven and lot eight. And our recommendation was that, um, they combined the properties because together, uh, the, the parcel becomes just over one acre. So a, a more reasonable-sized lot when we talk about building a home and then also needing to, uh, put a septic site on here. A septic site also has to be seventy-five feet from the stream. So when they bought it, they combined lot seven and eight into one property, which you see outlined here. So it, it, it became one of the, you know, larger parcels in the neighborhood compared to, uh, some of the properties to the south. So on the screen now is the, uh, survey drawings that the applicant has provided. What we wanna point out is the topography. So on the north side of the lot, which would've been lot seven, you can see how the contours really stack up, and that indicates a very steep, uh, deep line down to where Raven Stream is shown just off the property. So really not a suitable area. And then behind where they're showing the home, uh, less severe, but still a lot of, uh, topography in the backyard, there is a drainage ditch, uh, between this lot and the lot to the northeast, or no, yeah, northeast, that, uh, brings drainage down to the stream. So what's, what the applicants are requesting is a variance that would allow them to shift the home, uh, towards the cul-de-sac, which would be to the southwest. And that, that's represented on, yeah, two of the... Oh, I should, I should step back. There is what's called an averaging rule. Realizing that parcels of record, the setback standards were not the same as they are today. Um, when we have properties that are in district, there is an averaging rule which averages the setback to a DNR-protected water, but also allows averaging to a, a front yard setback. So when we apply the averaging rule, uh, giving you thirty feet plus the, the setback of the adjacent neighbor. So that's what's shown here on the left. The adjacent neighbor to the southeast, their home is located seventeen feet from the right-of-way. So when we do the average, we get a, a setback of twenty-three and a half feet. So that's what's shown on the left drawing. Um, as you can see, the back half of the home really gets into that slope. The right drawing is what they want to do, or what they're requesting is to slide the home to the seventeen feet, and that gives them, gets their house more out of that slope in the backyard. Uh, it puts it about forty feet from the back property line where the required setback is thirty feet. Staff is supporting the request. The, the main reason for the request is when you look at many of the homes adjacent, you can see the home to the southeast where we did the averaging. This home is exactly seventeen feet to the right-of-way. The home across the cul-de-sac is at zero. They, they may even be in the right-of-way. Many, many of the homes in this neighborhood just don't meet the thirty-foot setback. So what they're proposing is, um, really in conformance with what's been allowed out there. Pearl Street is a township road, so the first thing the applicants did is they did meet with, um, the township of Helena back in March, and the township, uh, did recommend approval of the request. The other thing that happened, uh, in the last two weeks is because this is right outside New Prague, um, this is within the Helena, city of New Prague annexation area, and there is an annexation board, and Commissioner Wolf, who's on the call, uh, is part of that board. So that five-person board met virtually two weeks ago, and we presented a very good view of that board. So it's, it's Commissioner Wolf, uh, two members from the city of New Prague, and two members from Helena Township. And that board unanimously, unanimously also supported the variance request. So in addition to the township, the annexation board staff has recommended approval of the request. The applicant, Mr. Skozaczek, is here. If you have any questions for him, otherwise I don't think he has any further questions.
Any questions from this board? Great. For clarification, isn't, uh, uh, the township's twenty-five feet, so thirty feet?
Um, Commissioner Huber and Commissioners, um, in some, it depends on the zoning district. There are some districts like, uh, the RR three district, which is around Cedar Lake, that is twenty-five feet. The urban expansion district happens to be thirty feet.
Okay.
So, yeah, depending on the zoning district of the city of, uh, South.
Mr. Chairman, is there a setback from this ditch that seems to speak as an important factor to the stream?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, um, no, there is, it is, the, the drainage ditch is not a protected water. It's hard to see, we don't have a aerial photo that shows it through the trees, but it's a natural ditch, um, but no, there isn't a setback to it. And actually by, you know, in theory, by sliding the house forward, they're actually, you know, bringing it away from that ditch a little bit more. It's not a heavily eroded ditch, um, because you can see it's put it through there, so you can't even see.
Any other questions from the board?
Chairman, they are aware of, of any road maintenance, snow plowing, things like that, that... When, if the snow, big chunks happen to fly over there, that, that's part of road maintenance?
Y- yes, um, the, the...
Oh, could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Jacob Skozaczek, I'm the owner of this property. Um, the, uh, Pearl Street, the actual cul-de-sac and everything is, uh, is very small compared to the actual road right-of-way, and my, our, our proposed home would actually be like the, to the closest, uh, location on the house to the actual cul-de-sac, it'd still be about sixty-some feet from the road. So any of the, um, you know, plowing and things like that, that would be done, there's plenty of room that that would all be, they won't even be touching any of the wood sets, our property or anything like that. It would be way away from our, our home yet.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from this board? If this is a public hearing, anybody like to address the board, uh, regarding this variance? This is the close of public hearing.
I make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second, I have a motion, second, close the public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. Uh, your wishes on this request for variance?
Mr. Chairman?
I'll make a motion, Chairman, I'll make a motion that based on the criteria for the variance consideration, I recommend approval of the requested variance to reduce a thirty-foot road right-of-way setback to seventeen feet.
Second?
I move.
Second.
A motion to second approve the variance, all in favor, indicate by aye.
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 Not in favor? The variance has been approved. Anything else? Do I have a motion to close the Scott County Board of Adjustment?
I'll second.
Motion second to close, all in favor, indicate by aye.
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 Scott County Board of Adjustment is adjourned, and we'll turn it over to Planning Commission.
Uh, good evening.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good evening, I called the order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting, May twenty-twenty-one. And, uh, I'll start with, uh, roll. Commissioner Hartman?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Robbie?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Commissioner Vonhoff?
Here.
Commissioner Hensches?
Here.
Hey, uh, with us this evening also, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager across from me, Marty Spitzer, zoning administrator as well, Craig Wagner, and Nathan Hall are also with us this evening. And as my understanding, then our county commissioner, Tom Will, is with us virtually. And, uh, one of our commissioners, Gary Perkins, is also with us virtually this evening. Our first item of business is the approval of the April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All of the commissioners have been sent a copy of the minutes. Are there any, uh, additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes as printed?
We do approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Huber to approve. I will raise both, a voice, vote on this item. All in favor, vote aye.
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 Opposed?
The motion passes. Hey, uh, next item is our consent agenda. And we have two items on the consent agenda this evening. All items that are listed are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event the item would be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. The first item, it's item number three-one, is a debut rezoning, twenty-twenty-one zero-two-seven. Request for rezoning of forty acres from A-one Agricultural Preservation District to A-three Agricultural Preservation Density District. Location is section thirty-three, Blakely Township, and the current zoning is A-one. Anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no one, at this time, I'll, um, move to the second item, uh, which is a public hearing for, uh, Becca's IUP, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-thirty. Request for an interim use permit for detached accessory dwelling unit. Location is section seventeen, Blakely Township. The current zoning is A-one and A-two. Anyone like that removed from the consent agenda? Okay? At this time, uh, I would ask for a motion to approve these two items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the two items on the consent agenda, uh, yeah, consent, uh, agenda as you...
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Johnson, is there any further discussion? At this time, I will, uh, I will pull for the vote on this. Commissioner Hensches?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Vonhoff?
Yes.
The items on the consent agenda are passed, so if you were here for the, either of those items, those have been approved for us this evening. We will now move on to our next item, which is, uh, public hearing for the Hiwatha Tree Service. Number twenty-twenty-one and, yes, zero-two-five, it's a request for an interim use permit to operate a tree service as a home extended business. And the, uh, location is section twenty-five, Spring Lake Township, and the current zone is rural residential one. And Nathan Hall will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, the subject property is located in section twenty-five of Spring Lake Township, and is zoned pro-residential research for RR one, allows for home extended business on parcels five acres or larger. Uh, the twelve-acre property is located just, uh, south of Kane Lake, and a strip of... That comes into the property here. And, uh, it's surrounded, and also has agricultural land, uh, funding here on the north. Otherwise, it's surrounded by, uh, other large law... It is accessed by, uh, two oh-fifth Street East, which is a gravel township roadway. The applicant's, uh, proposed home extended business is a tree service company, as explained in their narrative. Uh, county ordinance, uh, allows for one non-resident employee working on site and up to three business-associated vehicles for a home extended business. As outlined in the narrative, they have one employee, uh, that would be the applicant's son, who would come on and off of the property. Uh, no customers, members of the public would be, uh, coming to and from the property. Uh, they would store trucks entirely on, uh, pole buildings that they would be constructing, and, um, uh, which is required by zoning ordinance, they're not allowed any outdoor storage. The business does plan to keep four heavy trucks, uh, in the building, uh, three of which are actively being used. Uh, additionally, a heavy-duty pickup truck that is also used as a personal vehicle is owned by the business along with the equipment trailer. Uh, in the narrative, the applicant describes unique use for each truck in the business. Uh, the three-truck limitation is meant to, uh, limit the size of the home extended business on the residential property. No other aspect of applicant's proposal exceeds those size limitations. The applicants have clarified that no, uh, free debris would be brought on or off of the property, um, and the building would only be used for parking and light maintenance of the company vehicles and equipment. Uh, Mr. Heller may also use the structure for personal storage or hobby purposes. Property is allowed up to five thousand square feet of detached accessory building area, and the applicants, uh, plan to construct a four thousand-square-foot, uh, pole building where the trucks would be parked. The proposed building site is in the northeast, uh, corner of the site. The nearest neighboring residence would be over, uh, a couple hundred feet from the accessory building, uh, that would contain the, uh, business use. The applicants do not intend to add, uh, a bathroom into the structure, uh, but Environmental Services has reviewed the request and, uh, by their comments in the attachment memo, comments that do need to be, uh, addressed alongside the building permits. Scott County Natural Resources Department has also reviewed the request and provide, and they are requesting, uh, grading plan and additional information, uh, that again will need to be addressed at the time of the building permits. Still, the Department of Natural Resources do not have any, uh, comments regarding the request. The Spring Lake Town Board discussed this item at their April meeting, and, uh, the township recommended approval of the request with the condition that the IUP be renewed in one year to check for safety and road deterioration issues. Uh, a proposed condition has been added to the interim use permit stating, this IUP is condition number three. Uh, this IUP shall be renewed by the township at a time and manner as prescribed by Spring Lake Township Board. The request will be reviewed by the township at one year from approval to check for safety and road deterioration issues. Issues are identified, the applicant will work with the township itself, implement the situation strategies. And, uh, staff has recommended approval of this request, uh, based on this criteria of people who are in the township board. Commissioners will note that there are, um, uh, some additional comment letters regarding this, uh, two from nearby property owners along two oh... And, uh, also a email from the, uh, town clerk, uh, with the ground minutes from that meeting. Home extended businesses are allowed on gravel roads, uh, per township approval. And, um, uh, so any, uh, road issues, uh, we do, uh, represent it with the township here, uh, tonight. Take walk the Spring Lake Township Board, uh, to address the issue.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Hall and the Commissioners at this time?
Chairman, just that, um, the road is a gravel road, and in the spring, there'll be road restrictions on it, usually lasts six, eight weeks. And they probably can't even drive on it then. I hope they're aware of that. Ted?
His trucks will be under weight, they come home unloaded, we already talked about that with him here. So his trucks coming in and out every day are under the road restriction limits when they're unloaded.
Could you come up to the podium, just so we, we get you, and just say you've started today?
My, Ted was from the township, we discussed that. And his trucks, when they're not loaded with, are under the weight limits for road.
What is the rate, rate limit in the spring, do you know, per five-ton per...
He's not planning to bring any materials home, so we should be fine on that.
Mr. Chair, while you're here?
Yep.
Does the township, uh, dust coat the roads? You don't do that, so every, every township's different that way?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys have standard told you...
We found it causes too much frost boils, and it causes the roads to be slippery when there's a little bit of snow or a little bit when they get wet. So we found...
But it really helps with the dust issue, it does.
Chairman, but Spring Lake Township does allow people to put it on themselves with a permit.
Yep, and they've talked about that with this applicant, that as we monitor this, if that becomes an issue, he can dust coat that road to keep the dust down first. He drives slow enough, he's only coming, going out and coming in. Yeah. So if he drives real slow going out in the morning when it's kinda dudgy and stuff, I mean, he drives real slow coming in, he shouldn't cause a problem for anybody. So it's not transient business where he's coming back to his house and going out, coming back and going out. We thought it was...
Did the applicant wanna make any comments?
Um, Mr. Chair, the applicant... Uh, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners, thank you. I, I'm not sure what I can add, it just, I... We wanted to go through the right process with, uh, working on having our business out there. We're not currently operating from out of there. I do have things from the business there, but I'm using them in a personal way. It's, it, it, we need our equipment inside, and we have an inside space right now. So we're not, we're not operating there right now, but, um, I wanted to go through the right ways and, uh, make sure everything's gonna work out before we go out there and do something, because then we're, we have nowhere then. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that there might be, and, um, I've, I've been trying to be as, uh, what would you say, uh, I've been trying to consider all the facets of having a business out there and be respectful of the neighbors. Um, and I know there's concerns about, uh, trucks on the road with, you know, children and things, but, I've, I've made a point of saying that we're gonna do our very best to hold our speed at about fifteen miles an hour on the road, because it makes sense for us. It helps with the dust a lot, um, and I think it helps with the road, so. And then if there are people on the road walking or whatever, it's pretty easy to see them at that speed. We, we did just move in, in September of this past year, so it's a new place to us, but, um, and at this point, it is my son and I, and I have no intentions of having a larger operation than that. Employees are not my thing, so I, I don't see it happening. So that, that's not gonna be a concern for us. Not sure what else I...
Thank you, I just like to give the applicant an opportunity to come up and speak.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Chairman, I have a question for, it's Ben, right?
Yes, sir.
Ben, I, I thought I read somewhere where you, you may be doing some milling on the property?
Um...
Would that be in, inside the building or out?
I asked if we could, and I think we were told at the, the DRT meeting that they would not like us to. I wanted to be able to do that just for our own personal use, not to sell lumber or boards commercially, just, you know, just for our own personal use for things we've been using before, so...
Would that kind of hold true, as, as far as like a chipping...
Uh, we don't even own a chipper.
Okay.
We haul everything bulk, um, so we would not be, I, I don't think chipping on-site would be a good idea there. It's, it would be pretty loud, pretty loud.
That was my concern, yeah.
Pretty loud. The, the milling, if we wanted to do any milling, it would be like a portable bandsaw mill.
Okay.
Which, they're really not that loud, but I, I think the idea is they don't want us to stack up a lump pile of... Okay, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, a comment, uh, having driven two hundred and fifth, or two hundred and fifth Street, I, I don't see speed issue. I mean, it, it just doesn't, you know, allow you to go fast. So I would think that there's gonna be dust, but I don't know if there's gonna be any more dust, and your neighbors are gonna create them going in and out as well. If your truck is just leaving in the morning, coming back in the evening, you know, it's gonna get an issue there. I'm mostly concerned, I was mostly concerned about safety, but I think it, when you drive it, you really can't, you can't zip it, you know, so...
Any other comments right now? Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone can make comment at this time. We'll open the podium. If no one rushing up to the podium, at this point, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner?
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I have a motion here, default came at the same time, so, you're second? Okay, motion by Commissioner Hartman, second by Commissioner Hensches, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I'll be, discussion or comment or motion, whatever the...
Mr. Chair, I'll move, um, to approve the request based on that criteria for... For a home extended interim use permit to operate a free, free service business. And further noting that the Spring Lake Township has made one comment, would like this to come back for one...
That's it. I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Before I call for a discussion, would you like that added as condition then?
Yes.
Okay, so you're adding the, which is the township board to bring this back, just so we're all clear on that, that that would come back for review in a year. Okay, at this time, I will call for the vote, I will call by Roll. Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Haag?
Yes.
Commissioner Hentges?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman? And passes. Thank you very much for your presentation, and, and good luck in your business.
Thanks, Walter.
Our next item is, Brad Davis will be giving us our planning manager update.
Mr. Chair, some items that went to the board since our last meeting, based on your recommendations. So the board did approve the condition of use permit for the outdoor recreation use baseball field that was in St. Patrick, Cedar Lake Township, that was approved. They approved the request for the interim use permit to construct a private indoor riding arena, prayed in genitive, the applicants for the property in Cedar Lake Township. They approved the request for the interim use permit, place a mobile home for a firm family member, applicant there was Kevin Crowe, and an Excel system. Finally, they approved the request for rezoning, preliminary final plot of solar protection in Spring Lake Township. After the meeting, we will go into a workshop setting, we have a couple of big topics we want to cover with you, on land uses that generate some noise issues, revisit those, and whatever we like on those shoulders, also at our screening standards, maybe solar areas. So once the meeting is over, we'll do the workshop.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we, this is time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Huber, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned, going to our, our workshop right here.